Like that, just like that. What baby?
Well, we can, we can, we can start with.
No, we're not gonna talk about that.
No, no, that's not, that's not the line. That's not.
That's not the topic, that's not the topic.
That'll be twenty twenty one.
Come out the gates.
Make sure I share this.
All right, what's going on Facebook family? We are live right now. As you can see, the leadership team is here. We are live and in living color. Tell your friends, tell your neighbors, tell your community in the words of Bishop E., we are on the air. Uh, and uh, we, we are excited about conversation tonight. Um, and we're looking forward to having great discussion, great topics. Uh, but this is your opportunity to join in. We're not gonna be here long at all, as all preachers always say. Uh, ain't that what they always say?
Just forty-five apostolic minutes, that's all we need.
Always, we ain't gonna be long. Uh, no, hold up, now Caleb. I see something different. Caleb, are you, are you, are you about to come into this dread ministry?
Escrow Ministry is coming along, I think, that Escrow Ministry. That might be what it is.
Listen Caleb, I'll pay good money if, in homage to one of our.
Oh man, y'all, this is, is real. All right, what's up family? I see y'all, y'all are coming in by the droves. Um, I'm so grateful for you all joining us tonight. Again, we are joining in with Alicia team. If you are joining us right now live, put your comment, put your name, let us know that you're watching. We wanna know who's connecting with us tonight. Uh, we're not gonna be long, um, but we're gonna be strong, whatever. Um, it's just a good church uh slogan to just say right now, but um, we're gonna probably throwing a whole lot of that out tonight. Some of our favorite churchy, I mean churchy quotes and sayings that we hear in church on tonight, that's another one.
On tonight.
On tonight.
On tonight.
Y'all, I'm so over this on tonight.
But you are.
The placement of tonight, you are on it, on tonight.
I wonder will we become off tonight? That's, that's the real question.
Oh no.
What else would we say? At tonight?
Just what about tonight? Or, you know, do we even have to acknowledge the time?
How about now? Now, now?
You know, we're glad to have you on tonight. Like no, just, we're just glad to have you. We ain't gotta put on tonight at the end.
I'm going in tonight.
There you go.
Glad to have you in tonight.
When you say that, I'm like huh?
I'm gonna take it to my next council. You heard it here first.
Uh, listen y'all, I got a sneak peek into the O D C P Y P U.
Rare form, rare form.
Welcome. Speaking about the O D C P Y P U tubs, Farmer, really?
Oh my. We're, we're, we're gonna, we're, we're going there in January.
O D P, O D C P Y P U just for that night. I'm gonna have to be a member.
Listen, you already been family, so we might as well just. Go ahead and re- renew your license. Yeah, we're excited. We're definitely excited to have him. January the eighth, so please tune in if you're free, January the eighth.
Y'all listed Pastor Darren Farmer of Upper Room Apostolic Cathedral will be with the O D C P Y P U and our very own president for that wonderful district is on tonight. He's one of our leadership team members. Elder Denzel Tubbs, uh, who's with us. As you all know, of course, our, this is uh, the amazing leadership team. I don't want to just say my, you know, I, I don't wanna claim ownership of them, but I am proud of them and I'm glad to say that they serve alongside with me, uh, Elder Denzel K- uh, Tubbs, as well as Minister Jamie Lott and Pastor Elizabeth uh, Clark, as well as Pastor Caleb Kirksey. Uh, these are extraordinary individuals, great minds, and they have put in work this year with me uh, for Y M A, and I'm so grateful for them and I love each of them. Uh, y'all, I, I don't wanna do too much talking, I just kinda wanna facilitate conversation, but what's on your mind, man? Well, how do you feel about this year with Y M A or even some things with ministry? I'm gonna start with Tubbs, I'm gonna then go to Lot. And then go to Clark and then make my way to Kirksey, but just take the floor. What, what's on your heart? Just talk to us. How you feel? Like, what's going on?
It's, man, it's been, honestly, it's been a roller coaster of a year. Um, because uh, in the early, first quarter, or second quarter rather of the year, had a great loss, as you all know, my grandfather, um, went home to be with the Lord in May, and so that was the real tumultuous, shaky part, painful part of the year. Aside from the pandemic that we all have been dealing with. Um, but at the other, other side of it, as Caleb we were talking about earlier, um, ministry wise has been a dynamic year. The Lord has still been favored, the Lord has still provided opportunity to minister, even if it's all virtual or mostly virtual, um, those are just as effective and just as much of a blessing as traveling. And so of course, uh, most of us being evangelists and traveling, tho- those who are watching, um, you miss the road. You watch old clips of high church moments, high moments in your ministry, high moments in the organization and all that stuff, and you miss the road. But nevertheless, um, the Lord has still blessed even um, in the virtual space, so it's been a roller coaster, but um, twenty twenty won me now, all right?
Well, what I must say is, is that twenty twenty has, I mean, obviously, everyone came into the year with uh, an assumption of who twenty twenty would be and proved us all wrong, twenty twenty did. So, I mean, for me, obviously, there has been a lot of tragedy this year, a lot of loss. I mean, both within our um, church arena, you've had great giants leave the scene, you've also had people that are well known, Kobe Bryant, guys.
Yeah, yeah.
No, uh, we started off the year at Shiloh Temple in San Diego with one of our, our head deacon passed away. Following that Kobe Bryant passed away, following that, um, we're in a car accident where I almost passed away. But God, you know, so it's really been a year of value in life and understanding and purpose. I feel like the whole year has kind of obviously paused. If we in a bit of a different way, cause those who are involved in media ministry, you know, we're still every week, every single week quarantine or not. You know, we are working and we are serving just in a different capacity. And so for me, it's been a, a press. And people have been on sabbatical this year for me, been putting in some work. But I believe that was all God's plan because just kinda been looking at what twenty twenty one is gonna be. Um, not to get extra deep so early on this uh, Zoom. But um, you know, we, we always want a harvest and we always want, you know, God let us reap what we've sown and all this great stuff, but we're often not prepared to do that. And I think this year has been a year of preparation for me personally. Where twenty twenty one is gonna be a harvest, but what harvest looks like, it looks like work. And it looks like in large capacity, and it looks like you having to handle the things that God has put into your lap. You have to be able to pull it up and to reap it. So I'm excited about twenty twenty one pandemic or not. I believe God is gonna do some great things pandemic or not. And um, yeah, it's just been a really a year of preparation for me.
Okay, I think it's my turn. I was muted, sorry. Uh, well, praise the Lord, everyone, um. Wow, what is twenty twenty? Um, first of all, I, I shouldn't be here, to be honest. I was the latecomer to the group. Um, someone was unable to fulfill duties and um, the Lord saw fit for me to be here. So I'm forever grateful for that, that God saw me this year. I, I think that's my biggest thing this year. God saw me. Um, two thousand nineteen was probably the worst year of my life. And God definitely showed himself strong um, in twenty twenty. I know a lot of people have lost people, you know, and, and um, even myself, I have lost some close friends and family, but I can say twenty twenty has probably been the best year of my life, though. Um, I have seen God do um, mind blowing things, things that I just thought of, not prayed, not uttered out of my mouth. And he brought it to fruition. Um, I'm so grateful. I, I would, I don't think I would have ever saw myself being here. Um, I, I tell Elder Cameron all the time, I'm just a girl from South Dakota, so, uh, yeah, I'm nobody, you know? And but God said, no, you are somebody. And so, um, that's, that's what um, I actually have learned this year. Um, I see who God has truly made me be, um, and is making me to be, I should say. Um, that I can now run with it. Um, he's even changed my career path. I'm blessed to know, or to be able to start a new job next week before the new year, um, in helping people, H R, just everything my heart's desire. Um, so I'm grateful for that naturally, um, even with the pay increase, like with no experience, like that's nothing but the Lord. Um, and I said yes to the call, that's nothing but the Lord, um, of, of pastoring. And so I just, I really am, am so grateful for what God has done. He's, he's definitely shown fruit from me as well. Um, he's opened doors I could not see and um, all I can say is thank you. Thank you, Lord, for, for all he has done. So, yeah.
Okay, with all of that, um, twenty twenty has been crazy good year for me. And I understand it's been a lot going on uh, in the news and a lot people losing jobs and families, things like that. Um, but for me personally, uh, like Pastor Leah said, this has been one of the best years of my life in terms of ministry. Uh, in, in a year, I mean, before I was uh, uh, traveling evangelist and different things like that. And I thought this year, things will slow down because of the pandemic, but things actually sped up to the point where I'm like, Lord, uh, slow, slow down a little bit, you know, all these different opportunities and things coming virtually and other opportunities. And this has just been, uh, as I said before, one of the best years of my life. And not only in ministry, but uh, in motivation. Uh, there were some times where I felt like I was losing motivation or losing focus. And uh, it's kinda like, uh, if, if, if Jamie, if I may say, uh, something, one of your posts you made on Facebook, you said, uh, God used this kinda year to make me whole. I believe it's something she said. And, and it, it, this year, God re-motivated me in some areas. In a year where it's a lot of chaos and turmoil and, and, and all kinds of things, God motivated me and put a fire back under me this year. And I'm like, Lord, I am ready for twenty twenty one. I don't know what's gonna happen, but this year, God really took some things to another level in me. So I can't leave this year saying, man, what a bad year. Yes, it's terrible in the grand scheme of things, but I can look back on this year and say, this was an excellent year for me and I'm, I'm ready uh, for the next season. Cam, I think he muted.
Bless his name. Uh, I'm just gonna go ahead and mute everybody. Um, uh, listen, guys, honestly, this is amazing. Um, and I, I want those that are watching, I don't want you to feel as though we are being desensitized to this fact of uh, twenty twenty, um, or the gravity of how this year, the, the severity of this year and, and uh, the gravity of the situation that this entire world has faced within twenty twenty. Um, we're not saying that at all, but really we're testifying to the sovereignty of God and how he's been so gracious towards us. And I saw a comment, I've seen all of the comments, I've, I know we have Melanie, welcome Melanie, Angela. Uh, Bennett is in, um, I see, uh, Latoya, God bless you, Daniel. Uh, uh, Lady Azwain, good to see you, says Jay, um, Shayna, God bless you. Get, just to get see, I see you all. I see you, I see you. Um, thank you for joining us uh, in uh, this conversation. Listen, um, I saw a comment that came up and uh, I think it was my boy Anthony. Anthony said something about uh, and, and I really wanna kinda bring clarity to this and, and, and really truth to this because he's, he's right. I strongly believe God has always been doing great things, but twenty twenty allowed us to see it because we were too busy to see it. I've seen some things this year. And I think that's a powerful statement in the sense we know God has been favoring us and we know God has been blessing us, but this year has created a opportunity for us to really focus on just how truly God, how, truly how good and how great and how awesome God is and how concerned he is with his people. Um, I mean, for us to be able to prosper in a pandemic, I mean, only God can do that. And I think that's what this year really proves, how much glory goes to him. Um, and, and we can really say that this is the Lord's doing and it's marvelous in our, in all of our eyes. Um, now, not to jump ship to, to, too much, but let's, let's, I wanna get into something. For all of us, um, I've witnessed it personally, for all of us that are on here now. Um, this year has forced a level of creativity. Um, not to say that we're not doing things that we hadn't been doing before, but we're doing it on a whole different level. All of you all, uh, some of us have been in front of the camera. But a lot of us have been behind, all of us have been behind the camera, um, and producing. Talk to me a little bit about the level of creativity and work you've had to put in to doing ministry from a production standpoint in providing quality content to people. Because whether y'all, those that are watching right now, listen, all of these guys, ladies and gentlemen, have produced and have worked behind the scenes. Some of them, yes, have been in front of the camera, but every single one of them have been behind. Talk to me about what that's been. Anybody can take the floor because y'all have been instrumental in helping your churches, your ministries. Caleb, taking the church that you now pastor that was your father and mother and literally bringing them into a new space, a digital space, um, where it's, it's, it's been just something totally remarkable. Talk to us about your experience with helping to provide quality ministry from a virtual standpoint. Anybody? Go ahead, man, yeah.
Oh, me? Oh, okay.
Oh, whoever, 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 yeah, that's what I mean.
You can go first.
Okay, uh, I would say for me, uh, really uh, jumping out into the virtual space was a was a barrier for me. So I, I, I can be shy sometimes. Of course, when I get up to preach, that's, that's the Holy Ghost. Turned into a monster. I said, that's, that's Jesus, not me. So uh, having to be behind a camera now makes man everything and go virtual. You know, I was really nervous, like, I can't see myself, I don't know who's seeing me. So, but God just kept saying, do it, do it, you know, the, the physical church shut down, but people still need to hear the word. People still need to hear the word of life. So do it, do it, do it. And once I got on, uh, really uh, doing it and, and getting on virtually, all of that fell off. It, it became uh, fun for me. It became a, a source of life for me to get on and, and bring the word virtually. Yeah, I feel like I've been doing it forever. And I said, Lord, I don't know if you're getting me ready for TV ministry, uh, T B N, the, the, learn your work. I don't know, but I feel good doing this. So it, it, it really just took my faith and took presentation because I started off just doing, you know, uh, doing it regularly on the computer. Then later I started adding extra graphic and trying to be more professional. So not only did it help me get over the nervousness, but it kinda helped me really start seeing things in a more professional way. But see, uh, trying to build up the visual quality of ministry and really seeing where God wants to take my ministry. So God really, he really transformed a lot of thinking for me, uh, just by going virtual. It might be a small thing, turned out to be something huge for me, so.
So yeah, amazing. Anybody else jump in?
I'll go. Listen, you guys already know. So I'll, I'll do it from, from two sides, right? Because I'm not one who is typically in front of the camera. I'm usually behind the camera. Y M A this year has forced me all the way, and you're laughing, bro, but you know, all of you are laughing, cause you know. Um, this is not me. This is way outside of my comfort zone, but I'm gonna tell you every time, and this one, Lord, I thank you for my Y M A family because I believe that God is doing something through this. I believe he's preparing me to do something more and take another step out there. There are some things that God has put on my heart that, you know, he's preparing and he's doing and what have you, but in order to get to those things, he had to first pull me all the way out of my comfort zone and show me the value of what he's, he's placed on the inside of me. Cause oftentimes we have things, but you know, oh, what, God, you speak to everybody like this. No, he don't. And sometimes God has spoken to you specifically and the word won't get out unless you step out of your comfort zone to put it before the people that it's intended for. And so that's what Y M A has been for me this year. You know, my own local ministry, I am the media person. And so, um, it has truly grown my faith in God. Because technical difficulties will happen. And you know, the saints will get on the line, well, I can't hear, well, I can't see, well, I can't, and you're like, bro, I know. But it, it really, it is a, it's, um, it builds endurance in you. And, and this is bringing it back to the core principles of, of our foundation of faith. It builds our faith, it builds our endurance, it builds our perseverance because you know, you got a problem solving, what you gonna do? Walk away from the ministry and then the ministry won't be saying, what you gonna do? So I mean, outside of the technical things that I've learned, God has really taught me a lot of resilience this year through the ministry of the media, so.
Wow, amazing. Uh, Tubbs, come on in here, man. Cause you take in even greater remangal to a whole nother level.
Yeah.
I, I appreciate that. I, I'll honestly say that with motivate, last year, of course, traveling, um, I, I got sort of convicted, though my pastor, um, supported me in traveling and everything, and I told him everywhere I went. I started getting convicted that I was not as invested in home as I once was prior to God opening a lot of ministry doors. And so uh, when this pandemic hit, it was that whole side of it, then it was also the side of how quality our services are, why do we not have the stream to match it or the programming, the virtual space to match it? And so I seized that moment to be like, Lord, okay, you shut everything down, so I, I'm, I'm dedicated, I'm dedicating my time to this. And I mean, with five thousand potential viewers on YouTube and Facebook, and of course, you know how that goes, but potential viewers, that's the emphatic word, but, um, I mean, Lord has really grown our social media uh, footprint um, over the last year. Um, and like, like uh, Jamie said, it has definitely taught resilience. It is definitely, uh, i- if anything, more patience to deal with um, the saints. Cause you know, I'll be transparent, y'all know, I'mma, I'mma tell it like it is.
Here we go.
You know, you know, the, 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 the reality is with anything, anything public, anything ministry in the public, there's always those professionals, those silent professionals, um, on the other side of the screen that couldn't execute anyway. They love to give comments.
I, I didn't say it, I didn't say it.
And so, uh, you know, you know, uh, Y M A family watching, I, I think I'm the Donald Trump of the Y M A team.
Don't do that, bro, don't do that. You don't mean it. Write that from the record.
But yeah, I, I, you, you get the text messages and the emails and all this stuff, why is it like that? Why are you doing that? Why? And of course, it, it tests your patience, but when you really have uh, an understanding on why you're doing it, um, it really motivates you to keep going. And I mean, the Lord has blessed us to help out on the council level and everything and, um, I mean, it's an interesting space, especially, um, in regards to how you view, view media, view social media, view your social presence, um, from here on out. Because there are some that have already been doing it prior to the pandemic, but people like me.
Right.
Who, uh, we just had, we knew how to personally post our own ministry stuff and, or video up, maybe every blue moon and all that stuff, but you, you, s- someone told me a few weeks ago, they said, Denzel is a very fitting name for you because you're trying to, you're trying to make this place Hollywood. But uh, I'll take it. And uh, but yeah, I've become very meticulous with how things are like, don't say that, don't do that, don't wear that. Uh, put this here, take that out, get, or you ever get rid of that?
It's important.
It, it really is important. And see, cause one thing I noticed and I'll, I'll be, uh, finish after this, is we really evaluated our insights for our uh, churches media and constant viewers really reflected our church congregation. A lot of middle aged or baby boomer saints. And really, that's great. We're glad to see that the saints are watching and they're giving and so forth, but at the end of the day, we're trying to reach others. And uh, how do we become relevant enough to reach others has been really the focus. But um, yeah, so this pandemic has allowed space for us to really consider those things and, and branch out into the area. And then even for those of us who preach, um, virtual services or have been invited to do so, I mean, it gives you a whole nother outlook on how to do that because you don't wanna be out there looking crazy and have a, have, have, have a God said word. I'm, I'm going there again, saints, just, just one second.
No, you, you need to go there.
Please let me. You have a God said word, but a demonic internet connection. You got a God said word, but the host that's bringing you to preach can't seem to stream your video. And I don't know, sometimes it's your fault, sometimes it's their fault, but I'll leave that alone. It really just gives a whole nother level of perspective.
Land of pre-recording, here we go.
Y'all, this is reality.
I'll tell you a funny, I'm sorry, Cam, I'll just tell you. Now, my friends here that were there that night during this taping, uh, they know who, they know who they, they know who this is that I'm referring to. And I will not name drop because I get in trouble. But I was taping one uh, message for a council in the Great Pentecostal Assembly of the World. And I forgot the diocesan bishop's name.
It happens.
My God.
It happens.
I said, we thank God for the diocesan tonight, bishop. And so, thank God for practical. Wholeheartedly, in practical, amen.
So y'all, listen, this is, this is, this is what is real about uh, twenty twenty. I mean, really, this year has dismantled so many of, um, the mask and things that we could, we are able to hide behind with church, um, in the normal structure because it's totally caused us to reimagine church, um, reimagine the way church is structured and, and the way um, we do church, the way the, the ministry of the gospel is presented. Um, all of that stuff has been totally reimagined and re- restructured and uh, it, it creates a new standard. We've talked so much about a new normer. But twenty twenty has also introduced us to a new standard. And I think if we try, in my opinion, um, to return to the previous model or way of doing church, um, I don't know, maybe is, is that me echoing? Uh, cause I, I don't know how much echo I'm getting here. Let me see here. Um, I'm gonna just mute everybody real quickly and then I'm gonna mute everybody back. Uh, unmute everybody. But I think one of the things that we have to consider, um, when it comes to even this year, the, the, the thought of redoing, undoing, um, going back to doing church the way we did it before, it won't work. It, it's just, we're in a new day. Um, and we have to approach it now from a standpoint of consistency. We've been introduced to new things, but now we have to be consistent because whether we believe it or not, Tubbs, you hit it uh, right on the head. There is a different crowd, a different group that we're trying to reach, but let's also be honest, that are watching, they are watching. And we don't want to lose them. We don't wanna fall short of um, reaching those who we may not have, would have reached prior to us coming out of our proverbial boxes and doing ministry in a different way. Um, so. and doing ministry in a different way. Uh so how do you all feel about that returning to the norm or returning to things? Because even now, from a political and 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 medical and health uh perspective, even with the vaccine, everybody's now talking about returning to a sense of normal. But in my mind, after this pandemic, I don't know, I don't know what everybody else is doing, but I'm not trying to rush to just walk around with no mask. Um I'm not gonna walk around just going back to shaking hands and kissing babies and all of those things. Um there are certain things that we still have to continue to ensure that the necessary precautions are in place. Um I I constantly allude to this reference, um after nine eleven, the whole process of TSA and checking and removing your shoes and all of these different things, that didn't end. It became a part of the the new normal. It became a part of a consistent standard uh for those that travel. And so I think that this pandemic has created that even in the secular world, there will be certain things that we have to continue. Like, I don't see it being a problem for people going forward and with it with churches, um as we slowly return back to in-person services to kind of continue the method of, we gonna check your temperature before you walk in here. It can hurt. It can hurt. So when it comes to doing church, do we just undo all of what we've accomplished this year? Just to return back to what we used to do? Or is there uh an is there uh a mandate, I guess that's the right word, for us to continue in the vein that we're moving and be consistent um with what we've introduced or what we've uh what we've achieved this year? Jump in and uh well, let's unmute so we can get some feedback from y'all, because I know y'all got some stuff. Anybody can take it.
Uh Liz, did you wanna go since you didn't get a chance? Come on, Bishop Liz.
Um, okay, well, since I've been put on the spot, um Thank you, Pastor Caleb. Uh anyway, um no, we can't go back to the way things used to be. Um I know some of the older saints would love that and and would like that, but um but that 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 would uh make the shift that God created. Something that uh, you know, just wasn't, you know, it it was set up this way. Let me just say it that way. It was set up this way. Um so we, that, we can't go backwards. We can't go back. Um uh I think that we have to now take into consideration, we have two congregations. We have the media congregation and we have the natural congregation. And so, you know, we have to um a- as we talked about earlier, we have to be creative. We have to, you know, really spend time with God and ask him to bring those ideas. Um I mean, that is definitely something I had to do. I I don't know a lot about media, but I had to jump in and just start running and and as things just came along, um things have progressed, so um it just kind of reminds me a little bit, I hate to get all biblical, but um it reminds me of like after the time, you know, after Jesus died on the cross and now the apostles, you know, what are changing to apostles, let me say that, um how they had to to change. They 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 weren't disciples no more. They weren't being taught. They weren't following. They had to actually be the leaders and run and com- uh create communities and preach this gospel. And so now we have to do the same. We have to take this shift and start sharing the gospel in in different veins and avenues um through social media and um we just have to continue to 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 heed to God's shift and and everything that we do, so.
I I I love that, um because what I was I was just telling someone the other day that, and it may not be direct correlation, but I've noticed that one, this is not our first pandemic as a nation and a world. There are several pandemics that have preceded this. And again, there's not direct correlation, but please notice that with every pandemic, there were, it seems like the revival that hit the world was around those same eras and those same times. Like the Spanish flu, I believe, or H one, I don't know what what they were called, but either way, hit around the same time as the zoos or the same time as the real Renaissance of the black church and the apostolic movement and all of that stuff. So we may not go back to normal in that a lot of the protocols have been set in place for being clean and being um what have you, is in place, but I believe as far as the church we're on the brink of another revival, right before the Lord comes back. See it that way. See through the lens of the spirit to where I believe God is gonna pour out his spirit and and at a greater level. Um because he's literally, again, I said it back in my download some months ago, that God has leveled the playing field. Anytime the Potter's House is having the same crowd as our Bible classes, Bishop Jakes is preaching to fifteen people on a weekly basis now. Um so anytime God has leveled everything out to that point, then literally we're at the brink of what God can absolutely blow our minds with.
Wow, wow. Anybody else, like, this is good.
Oh, go ahead. Pastor Caleb, please, sir. All right, well, I totally agree with what both um Pastor Liz and Denzel have said. Um one thing she said that stuck out to me is when she was talking about how the now apostles became leaders, and I believe during this time, God has formed leaders. Um God has done a lot of things in quiet. I mean, we've all been quarantined for the most part. There's been a lot of development that's happened in quiet. There is no, the the bridge has been burnt. We're not going back to normal. That doesn't exist anymore. Because, you know, even if we go back to business as usual per se, which would be just an atrocity to God, in my opinion, um the people are not going back to normal. There are some people, unfortunately, we have to face the reality. You know, we know the word says forsake not the assembling of yourself. Some people are not coming back to a building. We have to just let's be real, some people are not coming back. There are some people who are afraid. There are some people for health purposes who are compromised and afraid to come outside and will not be back outside. We have to be able to minister to that. There are some people that are in different states and even different countries who have caught wind of the broadcast and now want to be a virtual member. We have to learn as a ministry how to cater to that and still uh disciple people online. You know, they're not gonna be coming in for Bible class. They're not gonna be coming in for a tearing session. They're not gonna be coming in um for leadership development or for single as ministry. We have to be able to get them involved and find ways for them to engage and be active in ministry while still removed for us. So I mean, there is no normal, and this is the new normal. Um and it's just a matter of adjusting, and I believe God has equipped us to do so.
Go ahead, Caleb.
I was, I want to say two things. Uh I I was listening to Elder Mark Moore uh speak a couple of days ago. He said something interesting. He said, before church was in person with an online option. He says, going to your church would be online with an in-person option. And that was powerful to me. It really made me think, but I'm still on a fence about that. I'm still on a fence, because I I have a brother who plays in the NFL. He plays for the Green Bay Packers. And uh we might say
I know where Caleb is going. Come on, man.
We might say the people aren't ready to come back to church, but when you look at the football world, they are ready to come back in person. So I mean, yes, like this Sunday, Cleveland Browns had a game, in-person game, where twelve thousand fans were there. Oh, spaced out, twelve thousand. And so I was looking at that game. I was like, man, twelve thousand people, they just ready to get back to a game. And so it made me think about, do we really think people aren't gonna wanna come back to church? And yes, there's gonna be some people who wanna stay online and stay in their houses. But I believe, and not just in football or church, you look around, the reason why the pandemic's spreading so much is people wanna come back together. That's that's why. So I think there's an innate thing in us that wants to get back together, get back in person, get back fellowship. So I'm I'm the person who I don't think the new normal is stay at home. To me, that's, I don't think the new normal. Uh I I feel like the Lord is doing something like Denzel said, revival-ish. So it's gonna be something, some demonstration, something powerful. But I do, I I'm not persuaded that the new normal is internet forever. Uh stay at home, we're not gonna be in person anymore, because of what I'm seeing in the world, because of what I'm seeing with them, with with people, I'm just ready to come back. So I'm getting my, trying to get myself ready for if the time does happen that we do come back. Because like Denzel said, uh we've had a pandemic before. More people have died, not to be insensitive. More people have died and the world moved on. And they came back together again uh and through all of those things. So I I don't wanna get myself thinking that this is how it's gonna be forever. I don't, I don't wanna get sit set in that place. Because I do believe that, like Jesus said, forsake not the assembling of yourselves together. We're going to be able to come back. So I am not convinced that this is the new normal. I I'm convinced that this is the temporary normal. And at some point, yeah, so.
Can I add something to what he said? Because here's the thing, I agree with you. I I guess what I'm saying is the way that we uh carried on our services, that is changing. Because people, they want meat. They don't want fluff. The fluff, that is old. We can't go back to that. There is no, people are hungry at this point for something genuine and authentic. They don't, they're not. We have to make sure that what they come back to is worth their time at this point. It draws them back, because the presence of God will draw you. If he be lifted up, you know what I mean? So I think at this point, um when I say the new, this is the new normal, I mean, we have to be so connected to God, to where our services flow and we're not just praise the Lording for the sake of praising the Lord. You know what I mean? Like, it has to be purposeful. That is the new normal. Because people are not playing anymore. They're not, if I'mma come out, they go to that football game, because it's worth their time, and they paid for the ticket. They're invested. So we need to create an atmosphere within our ministries where people are invested and they're willing to sacrifice, whether it be their time, their finances, their resources. We're doing something that motivates people to be a part of it. So I think that's where we're headed as a, as a church globally.
And I I like that. Um I think where I've always been is like what Jamie said. Jamie simply gave me a definition of what new normal is, and I feel like a lot of people throw around, this is new normal. Without a definition, without what is church gonna look like, because it's not just gonna be internet, like give me, and she gave me a good definition of what people want and what new normal could look like uh in the future. And I think we need to, it's our, it's our responsibility to define what new
That's the part.
So.
Absolutely. Come on, Tubbs.
I I'm very optimistic. Um I'll I'll at least speak from Ohio. I'll speak from the Midwest, what I've seen in my council and and the surrounding areas. I'm I'm very optimistic, because we're noticing, our our fathers and mothers of the faith, our pastors, our leaders are noticing how much time I'm going there, I feel I feel my oil coming out. How much time we wasted?
We wasted.
I'm sorry, Pastor Caleb, I'm gonna need you to pray for me. I mean, I mean, we and I love, I love our, we honor our presiding bishop tonight, so don't, don't rebuke me, Bishop. I love you, sir. I mean, pre- pre-pandemic, hopefully we can take anything from mighty God tonight. I mean, I mean, everything was extended. And and I, and and as Donald Lawrence said, as I minister to you, I minister to myself. And I'm Ohio's watcher, so y'all don't get into those comments clowning them. But I meant, we could carry on. Praise and worship, praise and worship to to the word was This pandemic
So true.
Antics and the 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 crowd and all that stuff, it has taught us, all right, get to the
Because at the end of the day, with all of those things, you have to ask yourself, what was their true motive and intent behind all of that? People just gotta get on the mic. To hear us, some of some of these announcements, they weren't even announcements, uh giving trophies, give trophies out somewhere other time. Uh just unnecessary carrying on, but then when we provoke the praise, we provoke God, he come and move, and as soon as he moves, we give him five minutes. The devil is alive. Because, exactly, we get, get it all worked up, only doing to shut it down, because we wanna control the flow. Like, that's, no. This pandemic has removed, and and I think what between Jamie and Caleb, there's a balance, and and what we've all said, we've made it mandatory, based on our perceptions and our belief, uh our belief systems, you gotta, you can't be at home, you gotta be at church. Where this pandemic has taught us, I can meet God anywhere. And it's, and it's kind of gone against that argument where you can't meet God at home, no, I can meet him anywhere and everywhere. And this pandemic, at some point, none of us were having church. We all had to do it from home. So it goes back to the point that you brought up, and I was thinking about it when you said it with Mark Moore, Elder Mark Moore, what he said, in person with an online, uh well, online with an in-person option. It it's becoming to a point where what the church has to understand, we cannot be very egocentric. We cannot say, you gotta do it this way. Pandemic has taught us, if we are providing a ministry, if we are providing a service, let's even deal with it from a consumer-based uh model, we're providing a service. So we accommodate to meet the needs of the consumer. Um at the end of the day, uh Uber Eats now makes it available for people to have food delivered to them um from all of our big-name restaurants. Um before, the new thing was drive-up. You don't wanna eat inside? That's fine. Go provide driveway. Because we still want your, your investment. We still want you to come here. We still want you to eat. So we're making so many accommodations, because we still want your business. The same thing, we want your ties. We want your offering. We want your service. So in an effort to provide a service, to keep you involved with us, we cannot be so egocentric to think, you do it our way. We provide a plethora of opportunities for you to be a part of the ministry. So now that we have and we see that online works, Facebook, which we demonized and said was the devil ten years ago, and now your ministry survives, your ministry's survival depended upon it. Now that we see that Facebook, I'm sorry, Tubbs been getting it in, I had to get one in too. Now that we see that Facebook works, we don't remove these options, and I think that's the balance. What Jamie, Tubbs, and Caleb are saying, we don't remove what we've achieved this year. We now learn how to work with all of them. Now how, learn how to make it all a part of ministry. We now have an e-church. Even if the majority of our church, based on our demographic and our location, let's say for Charlotte, uh the majority of our church is in person, they wanted to come back. But we still have that demographic who doesn't wanna come to church for whatever reason. That's fine. We'll come to where you are, because we still wanna provide a service. We now have an e-church that is committed to you. If we have saints in other places, let's say, not even just health conditions, but someone mentioned it, someone across the country, Africa, international people that cannot be here, that their country won't allow them to come here, or whatever the case may be, we can reach them where they are. So I think it's now learning how to integrate the new normal of, we now have an e-church presence. We we know how to provide ministry to everybody. We, if you wanna find us to be a part, we got an app. We got a YouTube page, we got Facebook, we got Instagram, we got constant contact. Listen, if you want, if you old school and you wanna dial in, we got a call-in number. However, you wanna give, just the same way with giving. You wanna text to give, give the five cash app. You wanna mail your offering in, we're making so many accommodations, because if we want people to be involved, we cannot be so stuck in a mindset to say, you do it our way, or you ain't a part. No, if we want you to be a part, we will make accommodations for you. That is called servant ministry. That's that's called servant, servant hood. And that's what we are providing. The ministry has to remember that our mission is to serve the people. And in an effort to serve the people, we have to make things uh available to them. So I think it's just kind of finding the balance of it all. Uh our time is almost up, y'all. Come on, Tubbs. Yeah, what you gotta say, man?
Say something very quickly to that. I mean, it it even goes back to our earlier conversation about media ministry. Um I told the Saints at Greater Emmanuel, Um, I told the Saints at Greater Emmanuel, I said, I'm committed, literally in our leadership meeting this week, I said, I'm committed. My whole motive behind really assisting in the media ministry was to give you from home. The same feeling you have on Sunday morning when you come to the sanctuary.
Yes, sir.
I'm committed to making sure, praise and worship through the word, to whatever pastor sings or however pastor, um, goes to the mountaintop. Whatever it is, you should be, you should be able to push that coffee table back and rejoice in your living room, just as you would in the Isles of Greater Man. That's the kind of experience I wanna bring.
And you've been preaching like it, uh, Caleb, you've been preaching like you would at those councils and, and revivals. Y'all haven't changed.
Right.
And that's the consistency that I was getting at. How do we achieve consistency even with the integration of new models of ministry? That we've now incorporated into our familiar models, um, our foundational models, I'll use that word, I like that. Foundational models with the in-person gatherings and things of the nature, how do we integrate those things and remain consistent? We don't wanna get rid of it and say, well, it worked for the pandemic, but it's, there's no need for it now. No, there's need for it because. That's also a part of the revival. This greater revival that's gonna happen, is gonna happen tangibly in a way to where it's not just physical.
Right.
But God is so big, it's gonna be digital. It's gonna be virtual, like people getting the Holy Ghost in their house.
Yeah.
Where, how do we now deal with baptism? If an elder or minister can't get to the house fast enough, how do we now deal with baptism? Do we now have someone call in or FaceTime in or video chat in and they just do the, the, the prayer blessing? And the committal or whatever the terminology is for the baptism? And you just take yourself, like, all of these things we have to now consider as we move forward because. It's happening and it's a part of this revival that is happening. So, and does it, because it's different, do we say it's not God?
Right.
Because technically, they were baptized in Jesus' name. We know that John baptized people by literally submerging them. But if we do research, we don't necessarily find it in the scriptures, how that process looked. I know I'm messing with sociology, I know I am. I would stop right there because I don't wanna miss. Let's do some historical research and really find out, how did that process look in every. Because, um, as the gospel traveled, um. You know, there became such a great need to where people were hungry. And so at that point, what did it look like? And even some thing, what are some things that were not recorded that transpired? Um, and some of those things we are facing now, even in our approach to ministry. So I think when we recognize that there are no boxes to God. As long as we're following the essence of what God requires of us through his word. Uh, the way it may happen, may look different. Uh, but we just have to ask God for wisdom as to how to navigate through those, through those different things. So, um, before we close y'all, any, any last, any last thoughts? What, we, we've been talking about what we're sensing and feeling with this new year. What has God put in your spirit about twenty twenty-one? And what encouraging word can you give to someone who's watching? Those of you that are watching, I don't want you to log off, we're almost done, we got four minutes left. But I want each of the leadership team members, these incredible people, just to speak to us, what God has been putting in their spirit. And I want you to stay watching because there may be a word for you, um, before we get off. Uh, Tubbs, let's start with you, we'll go in the order that we've been going all night.
Absolutely, um, I really took what the Lord had been dealing with me on, um, to our ODCYPU. Um, and that word that kept resonating in my spirit, especially the last month or so, has been the word committed, committed, committed. The Lord is saying, or the Lord has been telling us, um, it's time to restore our commitment. How is that possible when maybe we can't even get into the sanctuary? How is that possible when church is inaccessible? But the Lord, as you said Cameron, has shown us several times in his word, and even in the history of our forefathers, in the twentieth century. There have been moments where God moves us in the most inaccessible places. I mean, there's been, there are stories, countless stories where we see, um, in certain areas where Pentecost was not received. That revival broke out because someone dared to be committed, dared to be different. And the Bible says that, um, the Lord will keep on, keep what we have committed unto him against that day. And so that's, that's really all that I've been on, um, and that I plan to be on going into this, uh, new year. Is really encouraging those that I serve, my family, myself. To really enhance or restore commitment to God, whether that be a new level of prayer, a, a, a fresher prayer life. Or a new level of studying the word, because we can't say it enough in this community of YMA. Um, that we as preachers, we can't be guilty of studying just to preach, especially in this hour. In this hour, I mean, the saints need a word. They need a tailored word that is as effective, as I said earlier, as effective in their living room as it is in the sanctuary. Because oftentimes we just respond because of the theatrics of church. But what happens when your hoop and the resonance of your voice in the sanctuary cannot be communicated the same way through the screen? I mean, as, as a hooping and as a growling preacher, and all, all of us are in our right. I mean, there comes a place and time, and that's why proclaim is so powerful because a lot of us knew and know. The preaching and evangelistic Cameron Adams. But I mean, very few, I, I've even had pastors in our council say, oh, Tubbs, I didn't know you taught. I'm like, well, I, I had to be able to teach before I could preach. And so there comes an element now that has been demanded of us to teach, to really rather divide the word. Because I mean, the sad reality is that culture has allowed us to preach. With bare minimum accuracy. And, and I mean, and still win souls. And so, I, I, I quit. But a, all I'm saying is that the, the Lord has really been dealing with me on a new level of commitment. And so I encourage those viewers who are watching tonight, they're really, really evaluate yourself, evaluate your relationship with God, evaluate, um, your passion. And to see if everything is in alignment with God's will, and it will drive you to further commitment, um, in him.
Alright, so I guess that's me, I've been unmuted, that's me. No, just to piggyback up off of what you were saying Denzel, that is actually our church's theme is fully committed. So that is confirmation, that is a real thing, because I think in this, this era, God is teaching us a new level of commitment. Because when you're at home and you're not going to a church every Sunday, or you're not going to a church every Tuesday or Wednesday or Friday. For evangelistic service or whatever the case may be, you have to develop a new level of commitment between you and God. That's accountability, no one is gonna say, oh, you didn't show up for church. It's, it's between you and the Lord at this point, you have to love him for real, you really have to love him for real. But, uh, what God has been dealing with me about, the talent of what you said is so accurate in this. That we need to pray for strategy for twenty twenty-one, because the way we've been doing it, we cannot do it anymore. And there is a beautiful harvest that God wants to give us, like he was dealing with me earlier, there's a beautiful harvest God wants to give us. But unfortunately, we don't know what reaping looks like in this season. And so we really need to pray for strategy on how to reap and how to maximize the reaping. Because when God says, okay, so I'm gonna give you your harvest, you get to reap what you've sown, that may look like an idea. But you gotta work that idea. That might look like a, a, a small concept, well, you think it's a small concept. But that's, that whole thing is, is, ooh, it's exceeding and abundantly. But unless you know how to reap and to open that thing up, you're not gonna reap the harvest. And so at this point, I believe God is, is really wanting us to seek him for strategy and wisdom on how to harvest. On where to harvest, where, where our reaping is, and how to actually take those actions in the upcoming year. So that's really what he's been dealing with me about.
Liz, come on, come on in, Tubs.
I don't know if I can follow that, that was good. That was so good, um. Um, well, I mean, honestly, to piggyback off that, I mean, like she said, you know, we have to strategically seek God on harvest. Um, but, and, and as you said Elder Cameron, um, we have to open our minds to different. I, I, I've heard that for the last couple of weeks, that God is gonna do some things differently. Um, he may do it rapidly and he may do it differently, and so we have to be open to change and change is hard, change is hard to shake off. Um, and, and our, the old way I should say, it's hard to shake off. Um, and, and embracing change is, is, is not easy. But, um, I think this quarantine should definitely get us prepared for whatever, because you know, when you're desperate, you don't care. You, you just run, you just go with it and you just, you let go. Um, but, uh, that, that's one part, but, um, the last part I wanted to share, um, and encourage everybody in. Um, it's Luke chapter five, um, God showed me this and I preached it on Sunday. And then, um, Elder, uh, or Pastor Chris Foster, I don't know how he even knew this, but he taught it on Tuesday night. Um, so y'all go back and listen to him, but, um, he did no justice, I did no justice to that. Um, but, but Luke chapter five where, uh, Jesus was, was teaching to the multitude. And then he tells Peter and, uh, the, the fishermen to go and, uh, launch their, their, uh, their net out to the deep. And, um, the New Living Translation says it's not the King James, so y'all don't crucify me. But the, the New Living Translation said, this time, um, they brought back a great harvest. And that part right there, this time, I know a lot of us have tried in ministry, a lot of us have tried in life. A lot of us have tried in various areas of, of, of life and, and like I said spiritually. But, um, and, and, and some of those things have failed, some of those things were overlooked, some of those things, um, no one even knows about. Um, but I, I want to encourage you that this time next year, this time next year, you could see a, a blessing. You will see it in your hands, you will see it come to fruition, that God was setting you up. You know how there's always the trial run or, you know, um, when there's a new program, they give you seven day trial. Um, that, that's what God was doing for you, um, and that's what I'm speaking to you. Um, and, and I'm believing for myself, is that there, there have been a lot of things for me personally, um, that I have failed at, that I have not accomplished. And, and, and I see God, even within this year, he has restored, he has given greater. And that's the thing is that it's, it's gonna be greater, what you thought was, is not it, it's, it's actually greater than, it, it's beyond your mind. And that's biblical, you know, it's beyond what we could think or ask for. And, and that's what I, I truly can testify to that. And so this time, um, is, is the word I wanna leave with everybody, this time. And so like I said, even prior to this, it may be different, it may be, um, unnormal. It may not happen the way, um, it happened for other people, so don't try to compare, um, to, to everybody else's blessing. And how they got blessed and, uh, how long you known that person, you may get married within a month, I don't know. But you know, whatever the Lord chooses to do, let him do it and, and, and know that it is of, of the Lord's doing. So that is my encouraging word tonight, amen.
Guess I'm here to take the offering after that. That was powerful, preach Liz, uh, and I, I'm, I'm gonna go online with that. What the Lord has been really putting in my spirit for months is the fact, he, he, he kept saying, the rain is coming. The rain is coming. And I've been just bringing that word out in many different areas and places. The rain is coming, the blessing is gonna be released, the, the resources are gonna be let out of the heavens. God is about to release, uh, some, 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 the dreams that he told you ten years ago, five years ago. However long, it's, it's the prophecies are about to be fulfilled. And he's been just showing me, uh, just cuz pandemics happen, doesn't mean God slowed down. We might have slowed down, God doesn't slow down, even at the beginning of the year, I think the pandemic really hit for us around spring. And he told, he had me look outside, he said, pandemic hit, people slowed down, but spring is still going forth. You know, the seasons are still changing, nothing, you know, I, there's no handcuffs on me. So things might have slowed down, but God is, his calendar is still rolling. So what he has for you is still getting ready to come to pass. And what he really took me to, uh, and not only to be ready for the rain to be released, but for us to prepare our chariots. Uh, he had me looking at Elijah, when the rain was coming, Elijah told Ahab, he said, prepare your chariot. And get down, that the rain stops you not. What was supposed to be a blessing, if you move too slow in your preparation, it will be a curse for you. If you move too slow, it will hinder you. So he said, get yourself together Elijah, get your chariot and ride. So that what's about to come down does not hinder you, it will actually be a blessing. So that's what the Lord has been, that's why I've been starting new businesses, getting my papers together, everything together. It's like, Lord, I'm, I'm ready, I'm not slowing down, I'm not, uh, letting insecurities slow me up anymore. I'm, I'm ready to move, so I pray that for somebody, get your stuff ready, prepare yourself. Like TD Jakes says, get ready, get ready, get ready, because God is about to do some great things in your life. If you are prepared, uh, for this new season, God bless you.
Oh my God, y'all, there is nothing else to be said. Uh, may, if, listen, if y'all didn't catch this, this live tonight, y'all need to go back and watch it. Um, if y'all even just fast forward to the last ten minutes, like you, y'all, no, you need to watch the whole thing, I'm sorry, I'm gonna lie to you. But wow, I know. That is the word of the Lord, everything that you all have shared, I know that's God, uh, cuz it confirms some things for me. Even Caleb, you said something, I'm not about to let the cat out the bag just yet, but, uh, he said something that definitely hit at home. Uh, but, uh, y'all, you've spoken life to me. And I know that you've spoken life to those that are watching. Listen, uh, if you do not, if you have not had them come to your virtual church or anything. Uh, this is Elder Denzel Tubbs, uh, in the burgundy sweater. This is Minister Jamie Lott in the burgundy sweater. This is my sister, uh, Pastor Liz in the leopard, Kita, whichever one, print shirt. And this is, uh, the bodybuilder, artist, muscle man, Caleb, uh, with the Malcolm X glasses down beneath me. Uh, listen, if y'all ain't had these phenomenal voices, and I'm not just saying that because they're family. I mean, they have word. I cannot stand bad preaching and teaching. They have a word from God, they study, uh, they have absolute sound doctrine, alright? Uh, I can't emphasize that enough. You need to get them, uh, to your ministries. I love all of you all, if we do not return to YMA in a virtual setting like this, before the year is out, we love you. And, uh, we hope that you have a wonderful Christmas and a wonderful new year. And we'll stay connected, uh, we'll do something, but if we don't connect in the usual sense as we have throughout this year. Uh, we just want you to know that we love you, we're praying for you, and I hope you heard everything that God's spoken through these incredible voices. Uh, because that's the word of the Lord, uh, for you and for your friends and for your family. Alright, we will talk to you all soon, and Lord willing, we will see you, uh, in the new year. And, uh, take care of yourselves. Family, I appreciate y'all, thank y'all for joining me tonight.
Oh, thank you.
Alright, we'll see y'all soon.
Good Christmas.
We gotta, we gotta let ourselves go.
You're the host. Bye everyone.
I bless your family.